City Council Committee on Financial Comfort Order, Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadim.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Pereira.
Here.
Honti.
Here.
Raposo.
Here.
Sampson and President Kamara.
Here. Just want to note Counselor Sampson had let me know that she can't make it tonight. She's going to be, she has a prior commitment, she'll be out of town for this evening, so she won't be able to make tonight's meeting. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have, I don't believe there's anyone that signed up for this at this time. So Counselor Kilby, would you like to come up and present a couple citations?
Yes. There was something written, I believe, in the New Bedford Standard Times. There was an article. Good. You're welcome.
Try to get it right. Just speak into it.
Hello? Okay. There was an article written which spirited me to put this resolution on behalf of the council. And if Ms. Brett can read into the record, I think it's important that the summarization of what occurred is better articulated than what I can say.
Two Fall River police officers who saved a man's life while on a ski trip together were honored by the Boston Celtics recently. Officers Garrett Nelson and Guy Frittato received an ovation from the crowd as they stood in the center of the TD Garden's famous parquet floor as part of the Celtics Heroes Among Us program. In January, Nelson and Frittato were skiing at Okemo Mountain Resort in Vermont, making their final run of the day down a black diamond trail to meet friends at the lodge. On their way, they met a man in distress, William Polzen Jr. of Manchester, Connecticut. His son Nathan Polzen had collapsed while making a run. The officers determined that Nathan wasn't breathing and had no pulse. Nelson called 911 and worked on getting the mountain rescue team to Nathan's location while Frittato started doing chest compressions, directing Polzen on giving Nathan breaths. By the time paramedics arrived 10 minutes later, Nathan was still unrevived, but their actions helped get paramedics find Nathan and his father and get the two to a hospital, excuse me, to a medical helicopter and to safety. Nathan was later brought back to life and is making a recovery. He and his father traveled to Fall River in February to thank the officers in person. Nelson and Frittato were guests of the Celtics for their April 14 home game against the Washington Wizards, which the Celtics won 132 to 20, 122. The Heroes Among Us program was established in 1997 as a way for the Celtics to honor people at every home game who, through their unique commitment and humanitarian spirit, have made exceptional and lasting contributions to our community, according to NBA.com.
Absolutely wonderful. Will you please come down, Officer? Officer Bello couldn't be here, I'm sorry. Officer Frittato. I know, I'm sorry, I apologize. I've never met you before. So this is Officer Nelson, who was there.
No, that wasn't him.
Okay, I'm sorry. So none of the gentlemen are here?
No.
All right, so on behalf, you're here on behalf of the Fall River Police Department?
Yes.
All right, should have done my homework a little more and said hello to you. Okay, so unbelievable, these two individuals, I'm sure they were at work. We have Officer Frittato and Officer Nelson, and it hearkens back to another event that happened. It was a massive snowstorm, I believe, and it was an off-duty firefighter who went above and beyond and actually evacuated the home or assisted in evacuating the home. So these two police officers, I think, it's so deserving, and you know, they're not here, from my understanding, because they're working. So there's an expression, I don't know who to quote, you know, individuals who become heroes and do wonderful things want to go unrecognized, and that's the truth. It happens by happenstance, and we are so lucky and fortunate that the city of Fall River Police Department was recognized by people throughout the Massachusetts, if not New England, at a Boston Celtics game for saving a life. So I want to present on behalf of the Fall River Police Department, we have once again Officer Garrett Nelson, Officer Guy Frittato, in recognition of your lifesaving response for the injured and the pride you bring to the city of Fall River for your actions. So thank you so much for coming down. You can deliver that to, thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, Community Development Agency five-year annual action plan, referred on April 9, 24.
Mr. President, I'm going to abstain from this vote, or this discussion, just for the purposes of being a real estate broker, and if any of my agents go get a grant through his office, I don't want to be a part of that, so I'll step out for this.
Thank you, Counselor.
My name is Michael Deion, I'm the Executive Director, Chief Financial Officer of the Fall River Community Development Agency. I just have a prepared statement that I would like to read in. Honorable Counsel President Kamara, Vice President Pereira, and the City Counselors and residents of the city of Fall River, it is a pleasure to be here with you this evening to adopt a resolution to allow the Community Development Agency to submit its year-five annual action plan on May 15 to the Department of U.S. Housing and Urban Development. The five-year plan addresses the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership Grant, and the Emergency Solutions Grant, and it strives to meet the three objectives of HUD, to provide decent affordable housing, to create suitable living environments, and to create economic opportunities. FRCDA will approximately receive about $2.6 million in community development funding, $1.1 million in CD home investment funding, and $242,000 in ESG solutions grant for the program beginning July 1, 2024. The FRCDA will continue to prioritize infrastructure improvements like street and sidewalk improvements, park improvements, job creation and retention activities, and public service programs like recreational, childcare, senior drop-in centers, and crime awareness programs. FRCDA will continue to offer first-time home buyer and homeowner and investor rehabilitation loans and grants, and through our emergency solutions grant, FRCDA will continue to provide funding for the homeless to First Step In, Our Sisters Place, and Catholic Social Services. The Fall River Community Development Agency and the Coogan Administration has worked diligently to prioritize funding to the programs that will help the city meet HUD's objectives. The five-year plan was submitted to each counselor, and I'm here this evening to answer any of your questions.
Counselor C2.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, thank you. On page 84 under the Affordable Housing, let me see. So the FRCDA will continue to offer the following housing initiatives to help residents access housing units that are safe, decent, and affordable, and then two of the line items. One is to continue to partner with the Massachusetts Attorney General Affordable Housing Initiative to work with the receivers to rehabilitate nuisance properties. Can you expand on that a little bit, please, and how, I mean, do we have any idea of how many properties and?
That's the building box program. What we've done, and I know Counselor Kadim knows about this program because I think it was brought about during the Flanagan Administration and then brought back during the Coogan Administration. It's going out and looking and doing receivership program for properties that are abandoned and vacant throughout the city. We do not have many vacant properties in the city, we're not like New Bedford, I believe they have 300. We've been working, we've made a priority. We probably have about 15 properties in the receivership program right now at different stages. We do three per month in terms of inspection warrants. It takes a little bit of time to do that, but we're looking hopefully to do about 36 of those per year. And we go through and we kind of force the homeowner through the receivership program to do, to bring the property up to code, okay? Sometimes that does not happen. Sometimes it's foreclosed property, sometimes it's property that's not owned by a resident of the city. So we really, really put the pressure on them to do those improvements. If they don't do the improvements, we'll go in with the receiver and do the improvements ourselves. At the end, what will happen is either we own the property, the property is sold back if they want to the landlord, if they want the property, but usually we take the property, we foreclose on the property, and we put that in our affordable housing inventory.
So when you put it in the affordable housing, that would be for someone else to purchase?
Either someone else to purchase or some of our chodos, which are community housing development organizations, will keep those properties and rent those properties out to income-eligible people.
And the FR, yeah, the CDA will continue to assist individuals and families at risk of homelessness by providing rental assistance to the Emergency Solutions Grant program. What type of rental assistance, and is it an ongoing, is it a one-time?
It's an ongoing program that's run through the Catholic Charities on Bay Street. We provide first month's, last month's security deposit. We also provide rental assistance for rental re-erage, so if people or landlords have passed through rent and they don't want to force an eviction on those people, those people can go to Catholic Social Services, apply. It is income-eligible, you have to meet certain guidelines, but it's there to provide people with the ability to pay their rent so that they're not evicted. We've had a tremendous, tremendous need in that program.
Yeah, we've had a significant number of evictions, and unfortunately, once the eviction happens, it becomes a much more complicated process and much more difficult for those people, correct?
Correct. I tell people to stay put and work through the eviction process, go through all different means before you give up your unit.
On the homeless and other special needs pages 87 and 88, I just had two questions. So I recently, it was recently realized that the Tameo Center is now closed?
Yeah, it is, the Tameo Center is run by a nonprofit agency, and you know, we can, we can work with that agency to try to keep them open, but if, you know, like anything else, if they want to close, they can close. They were funded with CARES Act funding, and they knew that they were funded from March of 2023 to September of 2023, and then their funding would go away, okay? The city ended up picking up all the way till March of 2024 with Opera Fund, okay? So we kept them open for about a year. I personally gave those individuals a listing of foundations and grant opportunities that we could apply for. The, as you can tell, there was, the center is now closed, but I don't think it will be closed for long. I think we need to look at it and change the system. I don't think we put an onus on the homeless individuals that went to that. I think you've seen an increase in encampments around the area because of that, and that's my fault, nobody else's. We, we need to have them buy into a mental health issue, job skills and job training program, not just a drop-in center. So I think you will probably see an RFP go in to the opiate abuse money for some funding of the Tameo Center. I don't believe that we should fund the whole entire thing. I think we should fund it for a piece of it and let them go out and find other programs and other grants, but I don't see that place remaining closed for long. That's my opinion.
Yeah, because it's listed in here with, you know, in terms of number of beds and different things, so I was curious what you think, how significant the impact.
The emergency shelter grant will not be closing. They are in charge of the overflow system, okay? They have 30 beds there during the winter months, which we have 50 beds at our shelter, and I know that the mayor and myself are working very closely with Steppingstone to increase their capacity, okay? They have a huge building, so we want to increase their capacity. The overflow shelter is not going anywhere, it's staying there, okay? The Tameo Center was something that was totally different from the, from the overflow shelter.
And then my last question is, under homeless and other special needs activities, the city has reviewed, revised, and updated its plan to end homelessness under the scrutiny of the Homeless Service Providers Coalition, Mayor's Task Force, and homelessness of the How many people have been helped with that initiative? What advancements have been made? And do we at this point feel like we're finally heading in a direction where we can truly impact the homelessness situation, or are we still mired down in the legalities surrounding it?
I can't talk about the legalities, I mean, you'd have to talk to the Cooperation Council. I can tell you that we have a lot, a lot of people working on the system. The Tameo Center is just a small part of it. We probably have at our continuum of care meetings 30, 30 to 40 people that are associated with that. We, you know, homelessness is a problem throughout the country. Fall River, in my opinion, does not have it as bad as we've seen in other parts of the country. All I know is, is that I put together a step and a plan with the mayor and with his administration, and we're following that plan, and I think we've been successful to a certain point, but it's not going away. The rents out there are not cheaper anymore. The deal of $850, $900, $1,000, if you go look, the rents are 14, 15, 18, and they're going up quite considerably, really quickly. So we're seeing more homeless than what we've seen in the past, but each homeless individual has their own set of circumstances. So my thing is, is to deal with people on a one-on-one basis, to try to make their lives, you'll always have the people that are homeless that don't want assistance. I mean, we have a lot of people who refuse to go to the First Step In. They're fine with the overflow shelter, as soon as the overflow shelter closes, which it has to, at some point, they go back to the streets. They don't want assistance, they don't want help, but you never know, that person might want help one day. If we can be there with an outreach team, with a fast team that we've put in place, if we can help a person, we're looking at getting some beds hopefully through Star, we're doing, I think we're doing everything we can possibly do.
Okay, thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions? Counselor C4, Counselor Kilby?
Just by way of comment, I'm very sorry, recent loss.
Thank you.
And I know the last year, 18 months, two years, has been a difficult time, yet you continue to put in the hard work and dedication that you're required to put in, and that, I mean, kudos to you, Mr. Deion, for just a wonderful job that you do, notwithstanding setbacks which happen in life, so.
I've been very lucky, I've been a very lucky person. People have it worse than I have, and a lot of kudos goes to those people right there. I know there's only three there tonight, but there's six other people with community development, and when I was out and I was down, they took over, and you couldn't ask for better people to work with, you couldn't ask for better friends.
One thing, as I really get to know you over the years, it's, you're so caref, what's the term, careless about, you help, not careless meaning irresponsible, but you care so much about other people. It's just a wonderful quality that you have.
Thank you.
And it doesn't go unrecognized, we're, the city's very, very, very fortunate to have someone like you serving where you serve.
I appreciate it, and that's the job.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Do you have any further questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Deion, and again.
Thank you so much.
We're very heartfelt for your loss.
Good job, Mr. Deion.
Next, item number three, communication regarding fiscal year 2023 financial audit, prepared by Roselli, Clark, and Associates. Hold discussion, come down, please.
of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Terenzio Vopacelli, I'm a certified public accountant representing the firm of Roselli, Clark, and Associates Certified Public Accountants with offices in Woburn and Hope Dale, Massachusetts. As described more fully in our engagement letter dated December 8 of 2023, we were engaged to perform a financial statement audit of the city's basic financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30 of 2023. This was the final year of our multi-year engagement. The objective of a financial statement audit is just that, to audit the fairness of the financial figures contained in the city's basic annual financial statements. A financial statement audit is not a forensic audit. We refer to our, we refer you to our engagement letter for a more complete and comprehensive discussion of ours and your responsibilities under financial statement audit. Each of you were probably provided with a two-page document, or I'm sorry, four-page document, was referred to as our required communications letter. We provide that at the conclusion of our audits to those in charge of governance, which would be this body. I won't go through the whole letter, but I will touch upon a couple of the key points. Management, which includes the folks in this room, is responsible for the selection and the employment of the appropriate accounting practices and policies. Accounting estimates are an integral part to the financial statements as well as their disclosures. The most sensitive accounting estimates pertain to the determination of your total pension liability, which is actuarially determined as of December 31 of 2022, which is incorporated in your June 30 of 2023 financial statements. According to your actuary, the total pension liability was roughly $742 million, and we subtract the net position, which is essentially the assets of the, of the retirement system, they were $357 million, that results in a $385 million net pension liability. The city's proportion of that is roughly 91%. Housing would be roughly 7%, the diamond is 2, and the RDA has a small sliver, 7 one-hundredths of a percent. At December 31 of 2022, your actuary had estimated that your pension system was roughly 48% funded. I would expect that in December 31 of 2023, which that audit will be coming up shortly, that funding percentage is likely to increase because you're currently at what's referred to as a discount rate of 7%, which is the median within the state, and you had a roughly 11% asset increase in fiscal 2023 based on your asset composition. The next significant accounting estimate is the determination of the total OPEB liability, that too is actuarially determined, and that is as of June 30 of 2023. Your actuary had estimated that it was roughly $499 million liability, less your $1.8 million of assets that were put aside, has a net OPEB liability of $497 million. The city is roughly 0.4% funded in that area. Finally, management's estimates of the allowance for doubtful accounts is another significant estimate, and for which there are significant reserves primarily in the way of the CDA loans, parking ticket programs, excise tax receivables, some property taxes, ambulance receivables, as well as a modest half a million dollars in the sewer and water enterprise funds. I'm happy to say that we did not encounter any significant difficulties in completing the 23 audit, and we didn't have any significant disagreements with management on accounting, reporting, or auditing matters. Moving on to the financial statements themselves, the city's 2023 financial statements were issued on March 11 of 2024 with an unmodified opinion, that's essentially a clean audit opinion. The city's financial statements include the financial position and results of operations of the Fall River Redevelopment Authority, which is presented as a discreetly presented component unit in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. The RDA's financial statements are audited by another accountant for which we rely on their report for the city's financial statements. When we take a look at this 70-page document of the financial statements, there are several key sections. We have what's referred to as the government-wide financial statements, and that presents the city's financial statements on a full accrual basis as if it was a private entity, similar to, say, a Bank of America or a Raytheon. Then there's what's referred to as the fund financial statements. Those are based on modified accrual, and those most closely resemble your internal financial statements. We have what's referred to as proprietary financial statements, those are for your water, sewer, and your EMS services, those are also on full accrual. There's another section for the fiduciary financial statements, that has your OPEB trust, your retirement system, and you have some modest private purpose trusts primarily in the form of scholarships. We have the notes to the financial statements, and then what's referred to as required supplementary information, which discusses, rather has a bunch of tables on pension, OPEB, budget-to-actuals, as well as the management's discussion and analysis which precedes all of these. The city's general fund, as reported in the audited financial statements, which varies from internal accounting in that primarily the stabilization funds are reported in the general fund for gap purposes, reported an increase in fund balance of over $19.4 million in 2023. That's very favorable compared to a 22 increase of 0.6 million and 6.3 million in 2021. As a percentage of general fund expenditures, the city's unassigned fund balance in its general fund exceeds 8.1% in 2023. Once again, pretty favorable compared to 22 at 4.9% and 4.7% in 2021. In terms of budgetary performance on a statutory basis, actual 23 general fund revenues exceeded budget by over 5.3 million, while actual 2023 expenditures were nearly 9.8 million less than budget. That positive variance is the primary contributor to the increase in the general fund's balance of over $19.4 million in 2023. Revenues in the city's general fund are primarily concentrated in intergovernmental revenues, which are roughly 60%, and property taxes. And then what's referred to as required supplementary information, which discusses, rather has a bunch of tables, on pension, OPEB, budget to actuals, as well as the management's discussion and analysis, which precedes all of these. The city's general fund, as reported in the audited financial statements, which varies from internal accounting in that primarily the stabilization funds are reported in the general fund for GAAP purposes, reported an increase in fund balance of over $19.4 million in 2023. That's very favorable compared to a '22 increase of $0.6 million and $6.3 million in 2021. As a percentage of general fund expenditures, the city's unassigned fund balance in its general fund exceeds 8.1% in 2023. Once again, pretty favorable compared to '22 at 4.9% and 4.7% in 2021. In terms of budgetary performance on a statutory basis, actual '23 general fund revenues exceeded budget by over $5.3 million, while actual 2023 expenditures were nearly $9.8 million less than budget. That positive variance is the primary contributor to the increase in the general fund's balance of over $19.4 million in 2023. Revenues in the city's general fund are primarily concentrated in intergovernmental revenues, which are roughly 60%, and property taxes, 33%. Those ratios were very consistent between '22 and 2021. Expenditures in the general fund are primarily in the form of education, personnel benefits, and public safety. Those three expenditure categories generally represent about 80% of your total general fund expenditures over the past three years. Once again, quite consistent. The city began reporting its ARPA grant fund as a major governmental fund in 2021. And at June thirtieth of 2023, the ARPA grant fund had over $59 million in funds it had received that was deferred into fiscal year 2024. As previously noted to this council, as well as to management, those ARPA funds must be fully obligated by December thirty-first of 2024 and fully expended by December thirty-first of 2026. The city has a dedicated resource managing this grant. The Durfee High School project was completed in a prior fiscal year. Accordingly, the city no longer presented that as a major governmental fund in 2023. The non-major funds consist primarily of state and federal grants, your community preservation fund, as well as a number of other revolving funds. And that balance increased over $6.7 million in 2023. That's primarily a function of the timing of receipts versus expenditures. When we move over to long-term liabilities, the city reports some significant long-term liabilities with respects to its debt, its general obligation debt, as well as personnel-related obligations, such as compensated absences, OPEB, and pensions. And its governmental activities, so that's going to exclude your water, your sewer, and your EMS. Those liabilities exceeded $992 million at June thirtieth of 2023, for which $484 million represented your net OPEB liability and $328 represented your net pension liability. That's roughly 82% of your numbers are related to these non-cash, recently adopted accounting principles surrounding post-employment benefits. At June thirtieth of 2023, the city's long-term debt exceeded $351 million, for which $163 million was in its general obligations. And the remainder was within its water, sewer funds. And those are going to be funded through the ratepayers. Moody's continues to assign the credit store of A3 to the city's long-term debt. This signifies that Moody's believes the city has a strong capacity to meet its financial commitments, but may be somewhat more susceptible to adverse effects of changes in economic circumstances than other higher-rated organizations. As previously stated, the city's net OPEB liability continues to be its largest long-term liability. It exceeded $484 million. For the entire city, it's $498 million. And its net pension liability approached $326 million in the general operations, $350 million when we look at the water and sewer and EMS funds. So the city reported a 48% funded ratio at December thirty-first of 2022. As previously mentioned, I would expect that that ratio would improve in 2023, which flows into fiscal 2024, because you had a pretty good return for the year. Finally, the city enters fiscal '24 with a number of financial reserves. Its general stabilization fund exceeded $10.3 million. And it had certified free cash of nearly $15.6 million. So some significant reserves coming into the year. That essentially concludes the formal portion of my presentation. If there's any questions or concerns, I may address those at this time.
Thank you. Counselor C. Four comes to the podium.
Really, the only question I have, it's the long-term debt. So as you probably know, we have a new regional high school coming on board. And the city's responsible for over 70%. It's a regional school. It's per pupil expenditure and the enrollment, which triggers what we have to pay. So that's the big one, I believe, that everyone is talking about. So the question is, looking towards our long-term debt, can we sustain ourselves as a city over the next five, six years with the resources and the ability we have to raise taxes by two and a half and increases and, you know, the things that we look at when we balance budgets? So in your opinion, is our budget projected over the next five, six years, is it sustainable? Or, and if it's not, then what steps would you recommend as a firm that gives us a report on the financial stability of our city? What advice would you give us?
Counselor Kilby, the debt that the regional school is going to take on will not go on your books. What will happen is your annual assessments will simply increase proportionally over the next, what, 30 years that they're going to borrow that money?
Can you speak into the microphone, please, so everyone can hear you?
So, yeah, so that'll actually be part of--
Hold on one second, please. What was the comment that you made?
So it's probably going to be over about 28 years because they've been doing some short-term borrowing, which then reduces how long you can do the long-term for.
Thank you.
So stuff will be coming off the books?
No.
You're saying?
They'll be putting it up. So essentially, they're taking out like a short-term, where they're only paying the interest. When you do that, it reduces the long-term, how long you can long-term it for. So now you're cutting down when you ban it. So then it'll be condensed down to the payments for principal and interest will be in like shorter years than the 30 years.
Okay, but we're being talked about and banted around that we're going to have a ballot question in November with regard to a debt exclusion for that project.
So--
So I'm just asking, with that hopefully being approved, you know, I mean, what's the options if it's not approved?
Well, I think that's a question--
That's a question. Thank you, Bridget, for letting me narrow the question I wanted to ask. Thank you.
I think he's asking, I mean--
Well, it's a legitimate question.
Yeah, I mean, I've been very clear that the budget, as is, without some kind of exclusion, it's impossible to fit this into the current budget the way it is. Without, there would be massive cuts.
So what if, God forbid, what if the question does not pass?
Then we have a lot of very difficult decisions to make.
Mr. President, I think this is a point of order. This auditor is not here to talk about debt exclusion--
I agree, Counselor.
--or what we're going to do. I think I want to hear what the auditor has to say--
That's a good point, Counselor.
--and suggestions he may say on auditing principles.
Well, the question--
He's not the mayor of the city. It's not his role to say what we're going to do in case we run into that situation.
Yeah, I went, my question was broadened scope initially, and it was about long-term debt and affordability going forward. And then I got a little too specific, sorry, Counselor Curra, in terms of what will happen. So I apologize for that, but I think maybe I overextended my question to make people uncomfortable? No, just to get a question. Thank you. It was a good question, though.
Do you yield, Counselor?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor C. Six, Counselor Partey.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Two things on my side, specific--
Counselor, Counselor C. Six has the floor, please.
Specific to the audit, in your presentation that you have, it didn't get lost on me, your comment under economic factors, where it says inflation is expected to affect the city in several areas, including increased capital acquisition, costs, higher borrowing costs, and higher operational expenses. So can you elaborate a little bit on that for me, please, or?
Well, that was simply a commentary that we've seen some pretty record inflation over the last several years, and that affects all of these areas. The cost to buy computer paper is significantly higher than it was three years ago. Fuel costs, these are all things that are significant, energy costs. If you want to go construct a new school, that cost has gone up considerably due to inflation, as well as just the general economic market. So this was simply to point out that inflation is something that does affect--
Sure.
--the city. And, you know, it would be remiss if we didn't indicate--
But there was nothing glaring, in your opinion, in terms of the city's finances, that had any impact on our budget that we need to pay better attention to as we go forward when it comes to the inflation?
With respect to that, no.
No, okay. Last question I have is, when I go back to the June thirtieth, 2022, report that your firm did, I know you didn't make that presentation today, but there was two findings in that report that spoke, and I didn't notice they were talked about in this audit. And the first one was the use of ARPA funds for COVID-19. I'm not sure if you remember this or not.
Are you referring to the single audit?
I am. The same firm completed it, yes.
Yeah, so that's two different things.
That's a separate, that's a separate part of our audit. And I did not prepare to discuss a 2022 single audit. My apologies.
That's fine. When was that presented to the City Council? Was that last year?
I don't believe there was a presentation, and it was provided to the City Council.
It was just given, and, okay.
That tends to be the way--
Right. I guess my question is, there were findings in that audit by the same firm with the use of ARPA money. Has that been addressed?
It has been addressed, and actually, we're wrapping up the single audit for the same year. And that is an item that's been marked as resolved.
Resolved, meaning the transfers already occurred? Did the council already approve the transfers, or was that done internally?
That was, it wasn't a transfer per se. It was an item that was charged to ARPA that should not have been.
Okay, because there was, just for everybody's edification, the city projected their report overstated by $275,000 on one side. And then the next one was the use of $45,000 of an ARPA grant through the general fund. So that's nothing specific, obviously, to this audit, but it was a finding in the 2022 audit that just raised some concerns.
Yeah, so I came in after that year, at the end of that year, and was working on that audit to complete it. And that is when the finding was found, and we rectified that.
Okay. Will that be a follow-up in the next audit that it was marked resolved in the prior year?
In the following single audit, yes.
It will be very good. Okay, thank you. I have no further questions. I yield.
To the Counselor's point, when is the single audit going to be completed?
Within the next week.
Happy to say that a draft is in the hands of the city.
When is the due date? When was it supposed to be presented to the council? Is there a deadline for you to present the single audit to the city?
March thirty-first.
Usually March.
March thirty-first is the deadline.
So we're already behind the deadline?
There's a significant percentage of the state that's behind the deadline. It's not--
Could you speak into the microphone? Sorry.
There's a significant proportion of the state that is behind that deadline. It's a function of significant federal monies that have been coming in. A number of communities that had never had single audits are now having single audits. So that's really stretching thin this industry.
But that's affecting us to do our single audit? Because other communities that never had to do theirs?
No, you folks have always had to have yours done. And to be frank, I don't think it's ever been filed before, March thirty-first in the last seven or eight years.
Really?
It's been after that deadline. It's a significant project.
So when expected to get, what, the next meeting or so, or two weeks, three weeks?
Yeah, we received, the city received the draft, and we were reviewing it. We actually had a meeting today with the partner from Terenzio's firm that does that single audit, and we're just fine-tuning a couple of questions.
All right, thank you. Counselor C. One, Counselor Kadeen.
Mr. President, just for, I guess, point of information. I know, you know, we're talking about the financial audit, and then there was mention of the single audit. Can you just explain the difference between the financial and single audit? I think most of us here know about it, but just for the folks at home who are listening to this conversation, that might not be familiar with the fact that the single audit has to do with the federal funds and--
Yes, yes, that's an excellent question. So the financial statement audit is an audit of the financial statements of the city. Are the numbers, your cash balances, your receivable balances, whatnot, are those fairly presented in all material aspects? When we move over to the single audit, that is a specific audit that has to do with federal programs. So currently, if a organization, I say an organization because it's not just a city or town, it's also private entities that may be receiving federal monies. Currently, if they expend more than $750,000 per year, they're subject to what's called a single audit. And that's a compliance audit that's based on what's referred to as the uniform guidance. And there's a number, I think it's twelve attributes that is generally tested. Is it an allowable cost? Is it an appropriate cost? Have you followed procurement? The vendors that you're using, have they been suspended or debarred? There's a whole series of transactions, internal controls, that are audited or are part of that audit. So it is very, it's very much, it's interwoven with this audit, but it does have a different focus, does have a different objective. Does that help?
No, it does. And I think the, I guess, the benchmark for triggering the single audit is $750,000, which I think is important. Obviously, the city of Fall River always has it year over year, but there are a number of communities who do not get to that level of $700,000.
Fortunately, that level was just increased to $1 million.
Yep.
Thanks, sir.
Is that it, Counselor?
I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you very much for coming down. The presentation was very good.
Thank you for having me. Excellent questions.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn finance.
Motion to adjourn finance has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Finance is now adjourned. Regular City Council meeting will begin at seven o'clock. For our City Council, please come to order. Call the roll.
Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Deon?
Here.
Harid?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Ferreira?
Here.
Ponte?
Here.
Raposo?
Here.
Sampson? President Kamara?
Here. Will everyone in the council chair please rise for a moment of silent prayer? And at this moment, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of Vivian Deon. Our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family. She's the mother of Michael Deon, that was her earlier community development block grant director. director. Please remain standing for school to the flag.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Before we begin, I'm going to present the citations that were read early and presented by one of the police officers by the clerk, and presented by Counsel Kilby. We now have the police officer, one of them here, Garrett Nelson. Will you please come down? Garrett, thanks for coming down. I just want to bring everyone up to speed a little bit. Earlier at the finance meeting, Counsel Kilby was making a presentation, although Officer Nelson was not able to be here, but now with the regular city council meeting at 7:00, he's here. And this is for his courageous efforts when he was skiing in Vermont back in January. He found someone in distress, and him and his fellow officer, Guy Frittato, came to the rescue of that individual. So I think it was very courageous of them. They practically saved his life, and I think it's wonderful. I also want to point out, too, that I've known Garrett since he was in preschool with my oldest daughter, Rachel, and goes back a long time. It's great to see him in his hometown, providing our service, our community with a wonderful service. Thank you very much, Garrett. I'm going to read it. It's an official resolution, being resolved that the city council hereby extends its commendation to Officer Garrett Nelson and Officer Guy Frittato. In recognition of your lifesaving response to assist in the rescue of an injured skier, and the pride you bring to the city of Fall River for your actions, be it further resolved that the Fall River City Council sends best wishes for continued success, and that this resolution be entered into the records of the city council. It was adopted April 23rd, 2024, signed by myself, presented by Officer, by Counsel Brad Kilby, and the rest of the entire city council. Garrett, thank you so much for getting here. Thank you for what you do every single day for all of us in this community. It's an honor for me. Thank you. Also, thank you so much. Thank you. Will you please give Officer Frittato a citation as well? Thank you so much. Keep up the good work. Nice to see you. Very proud. Okay, hold on.
Very proud of him, I'm sure.
Oh, yes.
Correct. Good.
Thank you, Counsel.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Congrats. How was that Celtics game?
Better than the Bruins game. I know the feels. Were you inside the Money Bowl? No. No. That's, that's from the red side. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Ma'am clerk?
The first item is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Officer Jose Barbosa as the city's harbor master.
Motion to confirm, second.
Motion to confirm has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and an order appropriating $1,771,482 from the Community Preservation Act funds for the FY25 community projects.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
On the motion, Counselor seat six.
Yeah, I just want to, a shout out to the Community Preservation Act. They have done great jobs, a job with providing money to various organizations in the city, and they've done a lot of good work. It's just unfortunate that this year, this coming year, we don't have the amount of money that we normally get from the state, that the governor cut some of the money that we'd get because of housing issues, et cetera, and it's unfortunate. I wish we had more money to do more things, but this year, we didn't get all that money that we got in previous years. I just want people to know that. I kind of feel bad about it. With that, I yield.
There you go, Counsel. Counselor C. Four, Counselor Kilby, you all set?
Yep, just really quick, kudos, exactly. They do great work. I hope next year that I'm going to have the pleasure to see an allocation for the Bank Street Armory here. Looking forward to hopefully seeing that. I did read the news today with regards to the mayor expending $35,000, $50,000 to button the building up, which I think is important. So, you know, I went, you know, during that whole discussion, some of us were at opposite ends, but I think we all really want to see that building repaired, and I just hope if a message, I hope on behalf of the entire council that, that's on your priority list to hopefully allocate some funds there, and, and make, we'll make it happen, so. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ma'am clerk?
I have a communication from the mayor and a resolution authorizing submission of CDA's Year Five Annual Action Plan.
Motion to adopt. Roll call.
Motion to adopt has been made. Is that second?
Second.
Second?
Roll call.
Roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Carrera?
Yes.
Ponti?
Upstaying.
Raposo?
Yes.
Sampson? And President Kamara?
Yes. I just want to point out while we're here, and for those that attended the meeting late, the regular council meeting, Counsel Sampson is out of town, and unfortunately, can't make this meeting tonight. She has a prior commitment. Just want to let the viewers at home know that. Ma'am clerk?
Item four is the FY24 Quarter Three Budget Report.
Motion to refer to finance.
Finance.
Motion to refer to committee on finance has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the Traffic Commission making recommendations to amend the ordinances.
Motion to refer to ordinances, second.
Second.
Motion for the Committee on Ordinance and Legislation has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the Planning Board's report regarding the proposed zoning map amendment for the waterfront transit oriented development district in an amendment to the ordinances.
Motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinance and Legislation has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Finance at a meeting held on April 9th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying budget be referred to the full council for action, with Counsel Raposo absent and not voting. This is the FY25 budget for the EMS division.
Motion to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt has been made in second. Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on April 16th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained. These are handicap parking ordinances.
Motion so made.
Motion to adopt the emergency preamble has been made in seconded. Roll call.
Second. On adoption of the emergency preamble, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Carrera?
Yes.
Ponti?
Yes.
Raposo?
Yes.
Sampson? And President Kamara?
Yes.
Motion to pass through all readings.
Motion to pass through all readings has been made in second.
Seconded.
Second, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on April 16th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to pass through first reading, second.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on April 16th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be referred to the Corporation Council for preparation of a proposed ordinance within 30 days of this referral. This relates to the amendments regarding the Armory Commission.
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion so made, has been made, uh, made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on April 16th voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying resolution be referred to Corporation Council for preparation of a proposed ordinance within 30 days of this referral. This, this ordinance would relate to amendments regarding city-owned historic building demolition delays.
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on April 16th voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying order be adopted. This was the order recommending the approval from the Board of Assessors regarding Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41st C, that relates to exemptions for elderly.
Motion to adopt.
Elderly exemptions. Second.
Motion to adopt has been made in seconded. Should we refer to the, I'm sorry, motion to adopt has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on April 16th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be granted leave to withdraw. This resolution related to a cannabis review commission.
Motion grant leave to withdraw, second.
Motion to grant leave to withdraw has been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 14 is an ordinance for second reading and enrollment that relates to miscellaneous traffic.
Motion to pass second reading enrollment.
Seconded.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 15 is a proposed ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment and relates to the FY25 sewer rates.
Motion to pass through second reading enrollment.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made in seconded. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
For passage through second reading and enrollment, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deon?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Carrera?
No.
Ponti?
No.
Raposo?
Yes.
Sampson? And President Kamara?
Yes. Motion carries.
Motion carries, yes. Item 16 is a proposed ordinance regarding the FY25 water rates for passage through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Motion to pass through second reading enrollment as amended.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment as amended. Is that a second?
Seconded.
Second, roll call.
For second reading and enrollment as amended, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deon?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Carrera?
No.
Ponti?
No.
Raposo?
Yes.
Sampson? And President Kamara?
Yes.
Item 17 are citations for the Fall River Alliance Club Peace Portrait Winners.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the citations has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 18 are citations for police officers, Garrett Nelson and Guy Frittato, for their heroic actions.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt citations has been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The police chiefs report on licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, police report on licenses has been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 20 are applications for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses. One of those licenses for Carlos Jacques at 182 Stafford Road. We did receive a request from Mr. Jacques asking that the restrictions on his license be lifted.
Uh, refer to Committee on Regulations.
Just that item as a point of information.
Right.
Let's separate, take a vote on if, is there a motion to separate?
Motion so made, second.
Motion to separate has been made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And can you take it out, ma'am clerk?
Sure.
And vote on the other ones.
Yeah, sure. So the other two remaining would be Jeffrey Brisbane at 2524 North Main, and Sammy Salib at 2322 South Main Street.
Motion to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt has been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those two individuals, motion carries.
Item 21.
As a point of information, was there a motion for the referral of regu, to regulations for Carlos?
Not yet. We're going to do that right now. We're going to take the other one separate, ma'am clerk.
Okay, the other one was for Carlos Jacques?
Correct.
At 182 Stafford Road.
Motion to refer to regulations, second.
Motion for Committee on Regulations has been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 21 is a request for the revocation of a permit for storage of inflamables on behalf of the waste water treatment plant. Apparently, the tanks have been removed.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made. Is that a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council, second.
Motion for claims to Corporation Council has been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the Attorney General's response to a recent open meeting law complaint filed against the Committee on Ordnances and Legislation.
Motion to accept.
I will say that the Attorney General's office has stated that the committee did not violate the open meeting law.
Thank you.
Motion to accept and place on file, second.
Motion accept and place on file has been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a number of applications for drain layer licenses.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve the drain layers licenses has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to take 25 through 30 together, seconded.
Motion to take items 25 through 30 has been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ma'am, can you read number 25 through 30, please?
Sure. We have minutes of the Committee on Finance held on March 26th, meeting of the city council on March 26th, and on April 9th, joint meeting of the city council and school committee, public hearings, committee on finance, and the regular meeting of the city council.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve item 25, item 30 has been made in second.
Seconded.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Give me recess for two minutes to sign the ordinances. Can we recess for two minutes to sign ordinances?
City council will recess in two minutes.